Apologies from Sally and Watson and Paul Buckston. So, and then at the moment, we're also missing, um...
Councillor Skipworth.
Councillor Skipworth and councillor Clough, is that right?
Yeah.
So, do you want to take them individually? Or do you want to take them on block?
On block.
Alright, so...
I did speak to councillor Clough today and she was intending to turn them.
Right.
Right, so she might be late. Well, what it is, they're not here, so if they don't turn up, then we receive the apologies for councillor Watson, Buckston, Clough and Skipworth. Proposed by, uh, absolute, secondly by, uh, Daniel. I don't know if you've got my eight cards up. All those in favour, show your hands. So that's what was left. Seven. And councillor Brooks?
I think because we can't accept apologies for people who haven't sent a name.
You're not ready.
We haven't done that.
Then I may just put it as a block or four.
Yeah, no, no, we've only received apologies to people.
No, but he just read it.
We've been apologising for Sally and...
Yeah, then I would accept.
Alright, so that's what you had to say, and then...
No, but he gets that all.
Yeah, you're very far right, okay. And so Daniel said...
I don't need to bother.
Thank you, thank you. This is just the evening, gonna go like this. So councillor Clough has accepted Daniel, but she may be late, so we'll accept that. And we've not heard anything from councillor Skipworth, so we won't be forward with that. Um, all you do is it is declarations of interests, those that are standing. Any responsible, any interest that there may have in respect to items on the agenda, does anybody have any? And any other interest you may have in respect to items on the agenda. Okay, and obviously members all in board are reminded to inform Clough to change in their registered members' interest, which I must admit find you later in the week about one more changes. Which doesn't impact us. Chairman's members' report, received reports from chair of members who attended meetings.
Minutes.
Oh yeah, that's my minutes. Oh yeah, I've got to read minutes, haven't I? Uh, confirm the minutes of the meeting, so anybody got any observations or comments?
You are down as present and...
Yeah, that's been noted, that's been changed. Yeah, yeah, I didn't quite notice. Yeah, I know that, but I'm just looking at them, just to see if it has been amended. Yes, it has been amended.
Proposed.
So, proposed by Joyce, seconded by Peter, all those in favour? So that's six, is it? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and one extension. That's me abstaining. Because I'm a sort of... Members' reports. Have you got any?
Oh, yeah, that's the, um, first to say, it's, it's, it's the same, Adam, it's the same, um...
Oh, I see, yeah.
It's the same, it's all the same.
Exactly, yeah.
It's the same meeting.
It's all signed.
No, it's all signed, it's just, it's signed. Although, is this only the same?
Oh, right. Did it regret? Is that the exact section, is it?
Exact.
Yes. Say again?
Yeah, I've got two, uh, four.
You've got two boards?
Certainly have.
Okay. Anybody else got any reports or do you stand? Okay. Group, open roll.
Well, first one is for the Oakham task and finish group. Okay, this group was, um, started earlier on this year. And so identify and try and, maybe not solve, but try and help with the decline of small towns in the national problem. And they've undertaken a survey at the moment on how Oakham performs currently. Um, there's been a few setbacks with that, with the actual application of the survey, but it's been all squared away now. Um, looking at the importance, the information that's coming out of these strategy meetings that's going on. There's a heck of a lot of information that's been assembled by them, and some very, very good research. And it is of use to all of the town, any of the businesses as well. Um, I'm not sure what else to tell you now. There are, the meetings are ongoing.
Yeah.
And the paperwork has to be in by a certain date, which is...
And you can view the minutes on the RCC website?
I do believe you can, yes. There's also a, um, a Facebook group, which has been launched now. So, I would highly recommend it from RCC, sir.
Okay.
Um, any information you need to find on there, or the survey, is either on there or will be added on an ad hoc basis and requested.
Okay.
Uh, what else you want to add? Um, it's now used that information based through survey ranking and the, um, information gathered from that to try and form a basis to work through some of the problems. Um, there'll be an ongoing, um, forward action plan, which is hoped other concern bodies will buy into, carry the recommendations through, through into practice.
Cool.
Okay, that's for the Oakham task and finish group.
Yeah.
Next one, the verbal report, because there's a lot of information, and I'm not quite sure which of it is relevant for us as a council. Uh, this is referenced the St George's Barracks project. In the county town, obviously having a lot of the parish councils working alongside, it's not really, I'm not quite sure in our position, whether we should have a position. What we should be doing is working with the project to make sure all outcomes are satisfactory for all parties, which we know isn't gonna happen, but we just have to make the, the best of what is going on. So, what I'm trying to prioritise is the infrastructure not impacting on this town or anywhere else with unduly.
Capture that thought. Because what it is, as you're aware, on item ten here, we have...
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you could say the infrastructure is not impacting on...
On town.
County towns?
Yes.
So that'd be like, open and up again?
Of course, yeah.
Alright, I'm just gonna capture that now, because it might feel completely empty.
No worries.
Yep?
And also, the, um, demands of houses and the jobs that have been generated by there.
Yeah.
Um, what of that is gonna impact Oakham itself? And also the social housing aspect of it, see what sort of fraction is going to be delivered.
Do you say social?
The social housing, there's never said social housing.
Affordable housing, yeah.
Affordable housing. Actually, I'm still looking at the social housing aspect. So we'll see how that goes. We may need more about that, I don't know, but there's another meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Brilliant.
That's it.
The, the, uh, there's already two boards I sent around, rather than standard saying the types of open they've been sent out. Uh, almost to do with the Rockland access free, which is the one in there. And there's also the neighbourhood plan Oakham Barnaby for Oakham. Uh, councillor Brooks was, um, happy after this at the last meeting, but until the minutes have been approved, which they have now, they're all on the website. Um, so, so it does come out. Um, obviously I'm not...
Chairman, I would also like to know when the meetings are being held, is the public allowed to...
Well, it's all on the website.
Yeah.
But they don't put the dates or venue where they're attending.
Okay, I'll, I'll drop an email through to Chris.
Thank you.
Make sure it's on the website, so... Uh...
Because they are asking now for our input on that, so if you don't know when...
Yep, cool. Any council questions notified to the clerk?
No.
Cool. And clerk's report?
Um, just to say, um, the removal of the floor displays is scheduled for the sixteenth of October.
Okay.
Say that again, hon.
The floor displays will be coming down on Tuesday the sixteenth of October.
Lovely. Uh, opportunity for debateation by the public, members of the public are... And again, again, to the councillors, are welcome to address the meeting. Anyway, good evening, councillor Watson.
Thank you, chairman, I'm here merely to hear your debate on item ten.
Alright.
I should have an interjection at that point.
Okay, yeah, cool. Uh, so, I've managed to receive written and verbal reports to approve any expenditure from working groups and to make any decisions appropriate.
Um... I don't have one from the motions, and also you've just talked about the neighbourhood plan one.
Yes, the neighbourhood plan, they, they want some expenditure, which I think is basically, they just want through all the council. That's what they're trying to get, yeah. So, we've probably covered that, and we'll get through to that, just there, won't we?
Yeah.
And the promotion of publicity work group is at, uh...
I've got reports.
We've got their report, right, fine, so...
Let meetings next week.
So we'll pick up their expenditure on the neighbourhood plan at the appropriate time. Brilliant. Standing of accounts?
I've got, um, a quick verbal report from the finance.
Brilliant, yeah?
Um, once again, I checked, this time with Zoe, thank you Zoe for coming, to the, um, rectification of, um, the accounts, and, uh, there's no, um, big issues that the council needs to be concerned about. And there was one issue that I did say that I would raise in the meeting, because there's various people who have signatures, sometimes, um, we're not getting two signatures on the work orders and very rarely not two signatures on the chequebook stuff. Um, so that, that was an important thing to, to raise. Um, there were two other small things which the clerk is aware of. Um, on the payment thing, you'll see there's a payment to Wade, which is a new name for the Anglia and Water business department. Um, it's rather large, and looking at the invoices, estimated, so I've asked the clerk, or not asked it, because I can't give the instruction, just pointed that out to the clerk, that something needs to be done about estimated bills which suddenly jump into the thousands. And the same applies, there's an item on there which is described as a printer. That's actually the meter readings from our printer photocopier, and they're also estimated. So I'm hoping that the office will look at that. But there, apart from that, there was no other issues, the petty cash balance. Very happy with what Alison and the office are doing.
Okay, thank you. So, no observations or comments, looking for a proposal to accept?
Can I just ask a question? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Recent transactions, September twenty ninth, Oakham Studios. And then above that, it's got September the second. What's that for? Nine hundred pounds, because September the second, I think, was a weekend.
Yes, it's, um, that, that's for the September's length.
Twenty twenty.
Because it went in on, it...
It was paid on the twenty ninth?
Yeah, but because, because of the way the bank shows on the thing over the weekend, that's why it's...
I couldn't understand why it was paid on a Sunday.
Yeah, she, she paid, she emailed me to say that it obviously didn't show on our account, but it came, it should, it came in on, in the office.
That's all I'm thinking about.
Okay, uh, so you're looking for a proposal to accept the, the candidate, the vote by Peter, seconded by Daniel, all those in favour, show your hands. Uh, so that's unanimous, I think, thank you very much. So...
Oh, and can I just add one other point, because it's a long time since we did it. We also did a, a check with the health and the clerk that the money in the Cambridge Building Society is still there.
Okay, is it still there?
It is, we've seen the statement, but it was at the beginning of this year.
Is it always been there, though? So that was for proof, the standing of the council, that there's, what's nine to members to consider the financial budget?
It's just, it's just a wee hour at the end of the mark, just basically showing.
It's just the, the list of expenses.
Situation.
Right, okay. Do you do that as a set?
It's just a...
Yeah, so... Oh, right, okay, well, nobody's query that, so we'll accept the one thing, cover it there. So, ten there, the local plan, a bit my minute, but Alan, maybe you do that. Um, hopefully, now we sent these documents out quite early, I believe, on the local plan, so I'm curious to know if there's any feedback or comments. The A impact, or the B the impact on Oakham specifically, where the local plan is concerned, and then that larger piece of development that's happening at St George's. And is it worth mentioning this briefing, Alison, or not?
I think you ought to.
What it is, is that this document, uh, Alison approached by a gentleman called, uh, Eden Gilman.
Hey, just a...
Thank you. Um, brilliant, Alan, do like that. Um, and basically, it's like a bit of a questionnaire thing, now, thinking when these...
Referring.
Right, is it? Now, my only concern is, before anybody fills it in, if it's got Oakham Town Council on the top, and the clerk's details, and we as individuals choose to fill it in and give your own opinion, and then you send it to the leader of Brooklyn County Council, it might be perceived as you sending it in as representatives of Oakham Town Council. Um, we would need to give our opinion, I would suggest, as a corporate party, in other words, as a town council, which we do under a letter format, as Hadham Buckingham Town Council, which is why we have our agenda. If you choose to fill this form in and send it off to RCC, I would urge you to obscure anything which has got Oakham Town Council on it, because this form has not been generated by us, and the questions have not been generated by us, uh, so do not represent the views of the clerk or the council. Okay, is that okay?
Yeah.
Is everybody on with you?
Yeah, I agree with you.
That's interesting, though, isn't it? So, right, working around the room then, we've already captured some information on the St George's thing, but specifically the Oakham part of it, does anyone have any comments, observations? Peter?
Yes, thank you, chairman. Yes, as you and I went to the parish council forum, and we had a, a, an update presentation, number of questions from the, uh, villagers, obviously they're concerned about the impact of a large town on their border. And Daniel's made a few points already, about the infrastructure. We were promised early on that this would happen at the beginning, and I hope that's still the case. Um, when it happens, potentially, there's gonna be thousands of cars whizzing around. If the jobs aren't created locally, they'll be going out of the county. Um, getting back to the, the, the Oakham situation, um, quite a bit was made of the fact that St George's is down, on the latest plan, is twelve hundred properties, so it's a bit of a, you know...
Changes.
Yes, a, a bit of a, sort of a loophole feast, really, I mean, it could be, could be anything. I mean, really, they're talking of three thousand. But what it does to Oakham, it drastically reduces our requirements.
Yes, I think by fifty, sixty percent.
Yes. Um, and I may be pointed before them, but over the twenty year period, that means Oakham needs seventeen dwellings a year, which is quite a, a low number. Um, I mean, we must be realistic and know that this is a minimum. But I also have this squared with the various summits that are being put forward, and in section B, we've got additional summits, so there's two more.
Yeah.
And I mean, my opinion on this, St George's is gonna happen.
Oh, yeah, so it's gonna happen.
Um, unless there's a change in government or a war or something, it's gonna happen.
I don't think a war will bring us back.
So we, yeah, we're looking at these low numbers. Um, I mean, if, if that was the position, and I doubt whether it would be, the town would be stagnating to some extent, which isn't a good thing. The traders want to see more business, we need, we need some of it more buoyant. On the other hand, you could look at it, but it's gonna be less greenfield, uh, ground field sites that are needed. So it's a, a sort of a bit of a...
Double edged sword.
Yes. Um, I think that's all I'll say at the moment, and I'm really looking at A, you know, on the agenda.
Okay. Any comments from anybody else?
I was waiting for the turnaround.
Anybody else got any comments? No?
Well, I...
Oh.
I was just playing, thinking, I was going, alright, it's fine.
Do you have any which might add?
I have, there's my concerns before about, um, Rockland County Council's development, because this obviously will be a joint development, and that's, um, maybe that's the wrong word, but where they've been involved, I should say. Um, and my concern is that mainly for Oakham, but obviously it's been mentioned other county town and villages, but I would hope that unlike Oakham North West, that the people who get to live, that's not, North Luton, sorry, it's a bit, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, yeah.
North Luton, when you hear North Luton.
We know what you mean.
Yeah. Um, that they get their infrastructure, unlike Oakham North West. And I, I've said this before, I, I, I don't understand why we haven't had the infrastructure in Oakham North West that was promised. And for that reason, I can't really trust that Rockland County Council will ensure that St George's Barracks is not a burden on the rest of the county, and particularly our town, with the issues with Dr Sowles. I, I, I see the benefits, I'm not against the, the development, because that will help our town. People will still want to come into Oakham, even if there are shops and services there. So I see it as a, a good thing, rather than an empty field.
Okay, the only thing I'd say is that we have to be careful, not, I think that is to state, I'm sure it was as brutal and slick as they say, we shouldn't be stating that we don't trust Rockland County Council, because at the end of the day, there's a partnership there, I've...
Yes.
RCC and Ministry of Defence, because the MOD approached Rockland County Council, and the county council want to ensure that it's right for Rockland, so there were concerns over the development, so I, I... Just remind what I was saying.
I don't mind, they know I said it, because when we talk...
Don't you say it.
When we talk about affordable housing, they've not, they've not enforced that. Every year, we're told that they haven't, um, built enough in Oakham North West, so I, 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 that is my personal opinion, not the council's, so I can't trust them to be able to do that.
Okay, you clarify that, fine, that's cool. Okay, um, to, to, to now the other one.
Me. Um, just to answer a couple of councillor Ryan's questions, uh, reference the twelve hundred houses that was put in. That was mentioned on the last meeting. And from what I can gather, that's kind of, um, not an arbitrary number, but they had to put a number in, because paper has to go to cabinet, and they have to have a certain, a number in there, otherwise they get put to the back of the queue, and they're trying to get the paperwork in, so they don't actually slip out, slip off the radar, so to speak. Reference the, um, the job side of it, I think you're absolutely spot on. At the moment, there's fourteen hectares, I believe it was, that are set aside for possibly the equipment of an, not maybe not an industrial estate, maybe an enterprise park, that sort of thing. And if that's being looked as something that's needed to keep jobs and to stop the stagnation and stop sucking your jobs out of Rockland or bringing others in, that's woefully inadequate. I do believe that, um, the councillors involved, between councillor Brown and councillor Huntley, are reassessing that, so there is more ground actually going to be dedicated to that. Um, one of the things I was worried about as well is the housing that is going up, regardless of what that housing is, for when the actual quarry work starts, all of those houses will be outdated of their warranty. That's another thing I was...
Will they get houses?
They're building houses, and the quarry's not gonna be still up in another ten years. All the houses will be out of warranty, and even if they are social housing or affordable housing, how are they gonna be judging that? Because obviously what we have a lot around Oakham now is shared ownership, which is, for a lot of people around Oakham, is unfit for purpose. And this is what I'm being told. The infrastructure part itself, and, um, councillor Ryan's saying he's also correct about having infrastructure in. Um, I think we get councillor, um, Huntley told us on one of the meetings that when he first started squaring this away, he took the developers down to the Larkfleet Estate and said, right, whatever you say here is what we do not want. The pay, the payments are too narrow, and there's a raft of other things. In fact, there has to be a certain amount of developments or personnel involved in an area or place in an area before infrastructure has to be put in. My worry on that was, will they only build a certain amount and change contracts? But I, you know, that's one thing they can either hear and all theirs, have to wait until it happens. But reference this, uh, the HIF fund, or is it one oh six that they were mentioning?
Silver?
Yeah, silver. Um, whenever that goes ahead, will, what portion of that is gonna be going to Oakham? Because despite what infrastructure is going into place at St George's Barracks, we, we will receive an overspend of that, and that will start taxing our resources, with the way we have to provide everything there straight away. So I'm gonna be looking at those issues for tomorrow as well.
Okay, and what I picked up from that, because we, we have got two elements to this, the, the Rockland and local plan. Joyce?
Uh, the only thing that worries me, and we all know what land grab means, do we? That, uh, some of these houses might be grabbed by certain people to, uh...
Or landlords?
Hello?
Landlords, I mean.
Yes, because I lived on whatever it was road at Luffton, and a certain estate agent bought the whole road. This is not on me. I need to know that the people, the houses are going to go to people and not to land grabbers, either whether it's anything to do with the reservoir or local estate agents buying up land and buying up houses. I would like to see affordable houses for people who can afford them. Can you see what I mean?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how it could impact on the group by the half, but it's a good point.
But, you know, I went and had a look at our old house at Luffton, and it was on the market for eighty one thousand. It, that is land grabbing, and I don't know how we can stop it, so that people can buy what they want. I don't know how we can do that, or whether we can stop it.
Okay.
But I wish now I'd bought our old house, because it overlooks the reservoir.
Yeah, probably, I agree with you. Right, any other comments, observations?
When I come back on...
Yeah, of course, yeah.
I, I hope Daniel is successful in getting silver money for it.
Yes.
But silver money is, by, by its sort of, um, phraseology, is, um, community levy, and it goes to that community normally, but have a try, you know, because we will be impacted by it.
It is one of the things that the neighbourhood plans talked, it is, with reduction on fifty, sixty percent means there'll be a reduction on silver, you know?
Yes.
Um, yeah, the twelve hundred, I mean, I had got more notes, I just wanted to actually put things out to the meeting. I, I mean, what the leader said was, and the planning officer was, the twelve hundred was really a minimum, because there, there needs to be a critical mass to make the unit and the shops, schools, shop, um...
It's gotta be sustainable, the same thing.
And, and the other thing they were worried about, if they made it too low, and even twelve hundred may not be enough, is the plan has to go forward, and it could be challenged, and it could fail. So, I mean, I think, you know, maybe at the end of the day it'll be all. But I think, you know, what we need to think is, do we want Asher going down further? I wouldn't thought so, because, um, it's, you know, we, you know, if I may repeat what I said earlier, we could stagnate to some extent. We do need some growth. On the other hand, it's nice that it's, you know, we're not losing all the green...
And as you pointed out, it is over twenty years.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, um, chairman, there is some highlights of that. Um, one thing to put, I was constantly looking into, and have recently started, is we, okay, we may be growing as a county a quite significant amount over the next twenty years, but when you factor it out over that timeframe, we're not actually growing that exponentially compared, compared to other places. So maybe it's time for everyone to actually just agree that Oak, um, well, Rockland itself, including that, isn't gonna stay the same forever, and we're just, we are gonna have to step up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I can give you some, anybody else got any comments? There's got some feedback from the neighbourhood plan, uh, group. Um, they had noticed that the remainder requirement of new housing in Oakham has reduced by fifty six percent because of the local plan, uh, uh, changes. Um, compared to that, compared to the two seventeen from the sortation local plan, as I said. Um, it states that there was an objection for Oakham for the development and provision of service and employment by supporting an appropriate balance of commercial and residential. Now, we've identified that St George's, that there has to be a balance of X amount of houses and then about X amount of employment. We had this in Oakham, but I think there was an issue with some of the employment land down off Lanzarote Way, which is now been put over to housing, isn't it? Is that right, Alan? Am I correct?
There is constant pressure to...
Constant pressure, yeah.
To reassign it.
Yeah, yeah.
It was staying with, sorry, Kim, staying with Alby, because that was downsized to take over employment land. But the problem is with the, the developers have the land, and nobody wants that. For years, they had signs up there, advertised and business land.
Well, and, and the thing is, what the neighbourhood plan identified, there will be a reduction in number of houses, there'll be a reduction in silver money that may probably into this community. So, in theory, we, once again, double edged, we're afraid of the fact that there might be less houses in Oakham or in the immediate area of Oakham, because everyone thinks it's been hammered, especially with the Barnaby Ward development. Um, but of course, with the development of St George's, huge infrastructure, that infrastructure, all those amount of people and the vehicles, if those people, they're coming into Oakham, there's already car comp issues, and if there's nobody, they're coming into Oakham, because it's all being built out there, then how will the council ever afford it?
Yeah.
So it mentions all these sort of things, so what we got to do, we've got to try and put our comments that have been said around the table this evening over to the county council. And what I picked up and what was said around the table, without getting too tied up, from the Oakham's point of view, the Oakham local plan, there's very... tied up, from the Oakham's point of view, the Oakham local plan, is very, apart from the reduction in like 300 roughly houses, which is, I know, a lot, um, it's more of the concern for the, uh, the Oakham, I think what you said there about Oakham shouldn't, we don't want to stagnate, but once an open gets ignored, because St George's becomes the focal point or an opportunity to build houses. So from the local plan, I would suggest, probably, guiding from what even the neighbourhood plan said, that there is concern about Oakham stagnating with a lack of finance from silv to help develop what we have, maybe? And then from the St George's point of view, there's, more comments have come out of it, um, is that the infrastructure doesn't impact the county towns of Oakham and Naperville, so in other words, the county would need to make sure there's investment done there, but also the wider county, because there was arguments or statements, not arguments, there was observations, that some of the roads around leading into St George's, wouldn't have been able to take these positive vehicles, or less of it, and that's one of the big driving forces from the people immediately on the doorstep, Edith Weston and the Lufftons, that all of a sudden they could have this new big housing estate, and all these vehicles pouring in and out. I know there's been military bases there for years, but in fact, most people live on base anyways, there wasn't a problem. So I think if we capture that, that the infrastructure, that keeps coming up, is dealt with appropriately, the impact on employment, is there, is there adequate employment land for St George's to accommodate that amount of dwellings, if it is 1500 or 3000, if that gets over a 20-year period, and there's always been a question that comes up, what comes first, housing or employment? One thing that was said around the table, we're not against the development, I think we can safely say that the town council aren't against the development of St George's, and I know that this thing here is, I know the people here at Edith Weston are quite worried, so maybe just don't want it to go ahead, and whereas I can empathise, sympathise with them, unfortunately, something does have to happen in St George's. And, and that's one I'll capture, so Martin.
There was a question raised with me the other day, and I was wondering, because quite often, we don't give a, a firm answer when people ask us, does the council support it, and I suggested that we should have a vote on the basis that in principle, we support the development, then people know where we, where we stand.
Or to let you stand as a ca, as a body.
Yeah, that was what I was hoping would have been proposed at some point this evening, that we, we have a vote, and then as a body, they know where we stand, because it was pointed out to a lot of people. So a lot of people have been, I haven't personally, but I've read it, it's been bombarded with anti, and we hadn't really said how we stand.
Okay, we, we weigh that.
That would help, that would help organisations, if people are knowing how they approach it.
I'm, I'm happy to have a share of hands, I don't think that we need to admit it, that we're hoping anyway, well, we've already filled it, we should be voting, say that we support it or against it.
Or maybe we support it.
Well, we did, I'm just going back a few meetings ago, where we actually wrote in support of Edith Weston and North Luffton, remember, when we did that? Uh, St George's, right, we've arrived at a brief feedback from Oakland Town Council following the discussion, Oakland Town Council are keen to be involved in how we develop, our input of ideas and suggestions, and appropriate fit for future development, that should encompass the requirements and needs of the communities in the centre of the development, and at the current level, so we have, we've already done it, as well as supporting the impacted parishes at the heart of the development, the other parishes and town centres impacts are also considered, and we said that again tonight, the town council welcomes the opportunity to help support this multi-partnership consultation approach in the county. So that's why at that meeting, Martin, so a good point you raised this evening, but in actual, back in June, the council sort of said, we're listening to the concerns raised by the locals, but...
I can remember that, but I can never see the letter.
Six, twenty eighth of June, this is. Twenty eighth of June. So do we still need to vote to sort of say that we're definitely in support of St George's, or is everybody happy that, I think that we're not saying no to it, all's we're saying is in this, is that when it goes ahead, that we, the infrastructure, what we're on, Alan, is we're talking about St George's.
No, sorry, it's been there.
No, that's okay, sorry, we're just talking about St George's and the local plan, there's not much we've captured on Oakham, apart from there's been a reduction in maybe some houses that we developed, and it just echoes a concern, maybe not as much community money coming back into the town, but the big thing around St George's is what we're looking at, yeah, is that we're looking at, the infrastructure has to be right up at St George's and the wider community, that the employment balance with housing is going to be right, the percentage of affordable stroke social housing is managed correctly. Um, but the town council aren't against the development, that's where we stand at the moment.
Yeah.
So, may I say, may I say something? Please, could I say something?
Yeah, yeah, go on.
Today I had a circular that everybody...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm appalled at 3750, the number of houses, and yes, the infrastructure within the boroughs might be planned out, but when you come up to those banks, you're on country time, country mode.
Which is why we said infrastructure.
Wait, but we have...
That's not the infrastructure though, the infrastructure's within the development, how can they make those roads, to Edith Weston and North Luffton, back this way, any bigger? They can't.
Yeah.
So I'm totally against 3750, that is just ludicrous.
Although it's the councillors' not to fill this form in and send it back.
Yes, but I did notice that I made a reference.
Yes, and we haven't circulated this. This has been circulated far.
A man, well, a person.
Mister Gilligan, yes. So, right, did you want to come back in there? No, we, we, we're picking up.
Yeah, yes, I'd rather not vote just yes or no, but to do what you're proposing, that what we've encapsulated tonight...
We put on the forms.
Complements what we did in June.
Yes.
And then maybe put it on the website, and then local people, the villagers can see that we have had an input, we have debated it, we've taken it seriously, because if, if it's not done in partnership with the county council, the builders will deal with the M O D, which will be worse, we won't have any control over it, so this is the best way forward.
Okay, they're kind of sort of captured there then, um, if I get those typed up onto the forms, and then we just do one round robin to make sure everybody gets one view of it before we send it over, because to scroll it out tonight, I don't want them to look shabby on.
And to look appropriate.
Martin.
And can we, there was mention of publication, could that letter be published on our website?
Yes.
So people can see, because a lot of people don't know what our opinion is.
Yes, of course, yeah, yes, that's fine.
I haven't seen that letter, so.
I'm going, councillor, I was, Alan, did you want to have any input on this before we sign this off, because we'll be late on it.
Briefly. It will be brief, so no, if you all want to get away, um, I, I welcome the debate with your hand, if you're taking a corporate view on it, rather than individual responses, which I know has been tempting before, um, I'm also keen for the infrastructure to go in as early as possible, and I sit on a, a board that is aiming to do that.
Yeah.
In regard to the 3750, I have yet to find out where that figure came from, the official figure is 15000 to 3000, I would think it would be somewhere below the 3000, but I, I, I don't...
Yeah, Alan wants to ask you a question there.
Alan's fine, yeah.
Joyce, that's a two question.
Yes, fine.
Yes, first of all, I went to a meeting, and that was mentioned by, I've forgotten the lady's name, 3750, that was mentioned that night, and secondly, when you say infrastructure, do you mean within that village or small town, or whatever it's going to be, or do you mean the roads that are, that they have to take to get out of that place, to go somewhere else, because I am appalled at the thought of the building lorries, the excavation lorries, and then all the people, because they've probably got at least one car per house, on those other roads, they're, they're just not built for that.
The, the, these were, these have brought up in some of the debates as well, when, I think when Alan Duncan was in it, and there was concern raised about, it's not just about building for the houses, but yes, there will be transport going in, and that's something that has to be managed appropriately.
And also, and a lot of the people that, that I represent for have talked to in the town, are appalled at Brooklyn County Council cancelling buses, or allowing buses to be cancelled, when you want to extend the place, it is just ludicrous, and I know one of my friends came to see Alan at his surgery, or whatever it was, on Saturday morning, and, you know, people have gone to catch a bus to Stamford, but there wasn't one anymore, on Saturday morning, ludicrous.
That's, that's a separate issue now.
Well, yes, but...
It, it, it's not like, I know, lots of assets are carried, that sit on some of the boards, including the road project board, which oversees the whole thing. Uh, infrastructure is not just on site, for example, we're looking, working with highways in improving the junction, those half the road meets the A1, a lot of that in the Tingle Junction, I don't know whether it needs to exist, I don't know, certainly, we start at the right at very beginning, don't we, with the electricity supply, and so, which never gets out, so the whole thing is a massive project, and yes, you're right, that highways is part of it, um, will it, will it be the surgery of its own, almost certainly, at what level of housing can you then say is now sustainable to have a surgery? Does that help solve the problem of the cannon surgery closing down? Does it help bring back, up to modern standards, the antingam surgery? What moves? So it's highly complex, but you're right to raise the concerns, please be assured we can take it all on board, and nothing's written in stone as yet, 3750 is not on the paperwork at the moment, it is not.
It was mentioned at that meeting. Helen Priest, Helen Priest.
That would be some sign of it, the thing about, between 1500 and 3000, I expect it to be somewhere below 3000.
3000 is an awful lot of people.
Right, so we've got some notes, we've got a cutting plan, so I just need a proposal that these, that you're happy to, like, populate these on the forms, and, and then, yeah, and sent me by Martin, thank you, all those in favour, James? That's, um, everyone except Alan, are you abstaining on it?
I understand, because I missed out the conversation.
Right, no, that one, okay, so it's, uh, one, two, three, I hope that number is not very good, Matt. Thanks.
Please don't hang on to that, when you're trying to...
Hang on one.
I'm trying to get up to it.
Yeah, thank you. Right, the, uh, thank you, sir, the next bit is, I'll have to go over this, authorisation to pay invoices over 5000 pounds.
I took the additional side.
Oh, no, because I, oh, yeah, I mean, all right, very briefly there, I mean, all that I've captured on Oakham was that it's concerned that Oakham could stagnate, but there's actually a reduction in it.
There's, there's, there's two sides.
Yes, that's right.
There's just one thing to draw, and then there was him.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
So I was, I was going to speak on the...
Oh, right, big one, yeah, so, so number, it's on page 12, it summarises quite well on that local plan, and all it's sort of saying there is that, um, one is a, a site is a brownfield site, so it's previously been built on, and the, the other one, the land of Burley Road, has been drawn, so what, what do you want to throw in on?
No, no, just like if they want us to, to miss, make a comment.
Anybody have any additional comments they want to make on that? I mean, this is just...
No.
No?
No. Should we just, well, the sports class is brownfield land there, this is something I only picked up today, and what I'm going to be pressured is, some of that then classed as brownfield land, isn't brownfield land, and can be returned back to it, so I'm going to look into that to find out exactly what that means.
Okay.
I think they're talking about co-op sites.
The co-op, the co-op site specifically. I don't know.
Now, uh, when the co-op was built, I can go that far back, that bit of land was there, in case we needed to enlarge the store.
Yeah. So this, so it's a very minor change, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's quite deliciously insignificant, so we'll...
Yeah, I, I understood, sorry, and this is what, because of the discussion that people are having at the moment, and very concerned a lot of people are, I thought that the, that they decided that they could not build, that they would decide at the back house, now I don't know if that's right or not, but I'd be interested to know, so I can answer some questions.
It's all on the local plan, what, where the...
Has everybody, has everybody got one of these then?
Everybody's got one of these, it's also in the neighbourhood plan, a lot of these documents are put in the neighbourhood plan.
But has everybody got one?
Well, everyone can give an access to these. It's whether people have not read, read it, I mean, that's...
We need to access to me on the computer, not everybody's got a computer.
No, it's not posted, it's all posted there.
It's in the line, yeah, big one, it's on the line, and that's how they, yeah. We can, if you want, we can give you a, we might be able to source you a hard copy.
I've got, I, I was sent one by post, to councillor Skipworth, that's why I wondered if we'd just got one from this.
No, no, this is a very, there's been quite a lot, Rutland, that actually, they're re, they're relooking at the local plan, partly, because of St George's really, isn't it? So St George's has thrown the, the spanner in the works, because it's having additional houses, so there's been a small reduction at Oakham, and one of, and on the plot of land, one piece of land has been removed, a bit off Burley Road. Actually, I hear on page twelve. Okay, so give me the papers.
This is the co-op.
So which is Burley Road then?
That's, uh, this is the, Burley Road's Burley Road.
I've recorded the one, we noted the one side.
That piece of land is...
Okay, yeah, yeah. So proposal from Peter, that'll be that we locate one side, bring the draw, and all the, yeah, so proposal by Peter, seconded by Daniel, put Daniel up there, have you shown Alan's one in favour? Actually, no, that's, so... And the neighbourhood plan are doing quite a few, um, they've decided to do a lot of presentations at the library, so those who do, just want to see all the neighbourhood plan, you need to get down to the library and ask, don't go down this Saturday, I wouldn't suggest, because I'm there.
That's what?
That's, I'm reading the books, that's represented, the town council and the neighbourhood plan.
He's trying his book, isn't he?
Right, um, item eleven is to authorise to pay invoices over 5000 pounds, this is specifically to do with path, anybody have any questions regarding this presentation, which will take about two minutes? Fine.
Yeah, I just once again repeat that the council hasn't followed financial regulations.
Which one?
Um, I can't remember the numbers, but we sat in the finance working group, and it's very clear, which I raised many times with this council, that we hadn't followed the European law, or...
Which law, Martin?
Um, it doesn't actually specify it, but the office would be aware of it.
I will, I will clarify all that to you.
It's in outstanding orders, and basically what the European law requires us to do is any tender over a certain amount, which this falls well within it, should be advertised on a central government website, which the office would know about, um, I, I'm not sure exactly, I think it's over 20,000.
Twenty-five is the 2015 regulation, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, so all I'm saying is that I can't approve, um, a payment, though we haven't followed financial regulations, and that, you know, the, to me, and, and I'm not trying to make this personal, but the, the whole business of the tendering as it's minuted up there, because, um, the chairman asked it, he asked me to retract my allegations, which I find...
Which chair, sorry.
The previous one, I find appalling when a councillor points out that we hadn't advertised it in the way we haven't complied with European law, we're councillors, so we don't, we're not expected to know the fine detail of those laws.
I've got it prepared for you in about two minutes.
Yeah, it's fine, so what I'm saying is, because we hadn't complied with it, I'm not willing to put my name to it, and I'm fully aware that what Grant Thornton is likely to do to this council, if it decides to, I sent emails to all members pointing out what happened in the past, when it was a much lower amount of money, where the procedure wasn't followed.
That was nothing to do with European law, that was what I'm claiming, no, 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 excuse me, excuse me, no, you've made, you've made a false statement about previous councillor.
No, no, the, the audit report, which everyone can see, shows that he did not follow financial regulations or standing orders, no, but that was the point, that we could have ended up in a high court, or such a...
Right, should we go to the presentation, you've made it clear that you're not going to support this, you're saying we've broken the European law, yes?
Yes, basically, that's because it's in our, it's in outstanding order of regulation, that we, we should have followed it, it doesn't specify what that rule is, it's just...
Got it here, got it written down here, we're ready after we get it out.
But, um, but I, I, I also, I'm very concerned about the, the condition of the, of the work, it's not, it, it's still not good at the top, near the church end, I'm not particularly concerned about all the chipped slacks, because if we wanted to replace the edges, as you know yourself, they're only two pound a piece for concrete edging, but it's, it's the fact that we were told we were going to get something of an equal size, you can measure at various points at the bottom point where it narrows.
What was the way?
Can I have a point of order, and let's get on with what you're going to say?
Well, what, 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 did we agree with contractor?
I don't have it here at the moment, but it's not within specification, various, and, 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 you know, you've got dirt pouring all over the path, right at the top, and it was supposed to assault that issue.
Right, I'm, I'm, one of them does, I'm going to go through this slide deck, um, right, on the night of August, it's been stated that we haven't followed the rules, on the night of August, and this is minuted, after much discussion, it was proposed by councillor Owen, and seconded by councillor Romney, and resolved with eight votes for and one abstention, that the council seeks tenders, as per our financial regulations, it was proposed by councillor Owen, seconded by councillor Romney, and resolved with eight votes for and one abstention, to approve expenditure of 286 pounds to advertise, okay? And that's how councillor Haley, I have brought my chequebook here, because apparently one councillor says he's got to pay for this, but what councillor Haley did, because both But what councillor Hayley knew because both thanked councillor over his work on the project. On the eighth of November, we received our tenders and we looked at it. And the council resolved to repair and widen, so I highlight that, widen the path and curse close. It was proposed by councillor Skipworth, seconded by councillor Romney and resolved with ten votes for and one against to award the contractor to Martin Cameron Limited for the installation of the path of curse close. This required extra funding with ten and a half reserves over the next two years. Chairman, oh, I'm not going to worry about what chairman said there because he's not with us anymore. So we did follow our financial regulations, we went to minutes, we went to tender and we brought in the quotes. The quotes were presented that were received to this council and the council made a decision. If we turn around now, just point this out, if we turn around and go, oh, it's a lot of money, we don't want to pay it, the council resolved to accept what was being quoted and all we're being doing is asking, paying what we're quoting. So we cannot challenge the amount of money. All we're looking at is paying the invoice. Size of the path, the request that we put to Cameron's, the overall width was one point two metres or twelve hundred mil, right? Two people, and I did a bit of research on this, there's no real legislation on how wide a path should be, but two people walking side by side should have at least forty-eight inches, that's twelve hundred mil. A wheelchair, minimum thirty-two inches, which is eight hundred mil. A bridleway, which it's not, which is horses, gets moved a little bit, minimum is one thousand mil, and this is not bridleway. So then we looked at the path. This is what we were looking at. The picture on the left shows what we had and why we wanted to do something. The picture on the right shows what it looked like afterwards, yeah? As you walk, as you look towards the state path, you see what was there before, you see what there's after. Please take a note of the brown lines across the path. That's a vehicle track.